I'm going to call this regular city commission meeting to order on January 21st at 7:00 PM. We have Father Rooney here tonight to lead us in prayer, so I'd ask everyone to please rise immediately after the prayer, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Loving and merciful God, we give you thanks for the many blessings with which you have graced our own lives and have graced our city. Pour forth your grace on these, your servants, whom we have elected for the common good. Grant that your servants may be diligent in their decisions, charitable in their discussions, and may they always hold fast that fear can do them no harm. Guide your servants. We ask this in the name of the one who is the source of all life, through Christ our Lord. Amen.
For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor's be charging.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City manager. Communications, we have Item 4A, which is a DEQ certificate for operator Aaron Eckerson. Item 4B, which is Communication, is a report from Strategic Communications Solutions. And we have Item 4C, which is notes for the planning commission on proposed fence ordinance changes.
Make a motion that we accept communications and place it on file.
The motion is support. Any discussion on the communications? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They've been accepted and filed. We are now to the public comment portion of the meeting. You're invited to come to the podium to address the commission. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to under five minutes. Sir?
Larry Viscooner, 401-5 Carroll Street, Ring City. About the PA Act tax, is it 36? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Just like make a comment on that. When the East China School District attempted to pass the billage for the center on East China, they had two tax ballots on that, and then finally they pushed it in on a ballot on March, where all the senior citizens were in March, were gone to Florida, and finally passed. Is that what Marine City is trying to do with this?
Not at all. It's not the first election.
Election has come up since the petitions were delivered.
Okay, thank you.
Our city charter requires that when a ballot is proposed like that, it appears on the next election. The next election is March. Had it been May, it would appear to be May. That's what our city charter requires regardless of when that was.
Okay, if it's turned down on this ballot for one or two being...
That's it.
So it's one or done?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
She goes.
Here he goes, 430 South Water Street, the Mariner Theater. So I'm just here for fun tonight. I mean, I guess that's a good thing to say, right? We moved here last April, and we just were looking for an office building. We found this neat old building called the Mariner Theater. And then we said, okay, we're going to buy this place, and this is going to be our new offices for our business called Fine Art Models. And then we looked around, and we said, well, these offices could be galleries, and we could put the Titanic builder's model on the stage instead of shipping the Titanic around the world. We'll just put it on the stage and let the world come here. Since August 1st, we've had visitors from 47 states, nine countries, and every province of Canada. So we're still looking for three states. But that's not bad since August 1st. Well, then, a newspaper, not to be mentioned, it wasn't The Voice, did an article, wonderful article, saying we were going to restore the theater and show movies. And we just looked at one and said, really? Well, I guess we could, so we did. So we found the old 1930 seats, put them in there, got a sound guy and a projection people, and it's wonderful. It's a great little theater. It's absolutely phenomenal. We worked a deal out with Hollywood, and now we can show all the classic movies, can afford to show all the classic movies. That doesn't mean that we make any money, but it's certainly drawing a lot of people, and it's creating a lot of buzz for the town, which is what it's all about. We love giving back. Well, out of all this, my son is a film director, and he's made several documentaries, and he's one of the leading directors in the country now. And he did a documentary that's been on the show circuit, or the documentary circuit of film festivals, and it's one every film festival's been in. So last Thanksgiving, I'm with him, when we went for a long walk out in New Jersey where he lives, and he said, yeah, the rights have been bought up. We're meeting with a screenwriter in Hollywood, there may be a feature movie done off of it, but the documentary is going to be released with a company out of New York. Really? He said, when's that going to happen? He said, February. Yeah, so I've got a theater, yeah, Dad, 48 seats. I mean, they're going to 1,700-seat theaters all over the country. And I said, yeah, what's that have to do with anything? So I said, well, I'm going to talk to him, you don't mind, do you? He said, no, I don't mind. And well, I had a different idea, and it was kind of an out-of-the-box. So I met with him in New York. They said, we got 48 seats. So what's the difference if I show it 100 times, or 1,000 times? It's still the same numbers, isn't it? And yes, it's Marine City, but I think we can get publicity that not only will sell out any number of screenings you might want to give us, but we'll bring the media to Marine City like the media's never come to Marine City before. And we know how to do that. So furthermore, it's a small town on the comeback trail. It's a wonderful community, and there are a lot of little towns around the country with theaters sitting there doing nothing. We think this could be a model. They bought into it, they said yes, and so we're now one of 100 screens in America chosen to screen premieres of documentaries and independent films, plus we have access to over 1,000 titles now that we can screen. So The Great Alone is our first premiere. Ironically, it happens to be my son's film. And the premiere will be on February 9th, Tuesday evening. It's sold out, and they gave us three more screenings, figuring, well, three more screenings. Well, they're all sold out. And as of tonight, before I came here, they are now giving us five more screenings, and we know they're going to be sold out, because we haven't even put out a press release yet. So this town is going to rock. It really is going to rock, and we've made our breakthrough. The Free Press is coming to town with their cameras and everything, and they're going to do a story not just on the movie, but on the community itself. And we got wonderful articles in The Voice, and The Times Herald, and the Oakland Press. Everyone's picking it up because of the concept behind it. So I just thought I'd come tonight, and I've seen a few of you people, of the councilman and whatnot, stopped by the theater, and I haven't seen everyone. So now you have a free invitation tonight for two people to the premiere, but we're going to have you RSBB, because we don't want wasted on you if you're not going to show up. So I would hope you'll show up, because it's going to be a grand, grand movie. And I think Todd at The Sweet Tooth is going to have his grand opening to coincide with it, and we'll have searchlights downtown. I mean, it's red carpet, it's going to be the big deal, and I hope we see you there. And thank you for your time.
Have anyone else?
I don't have nothing nearly as exciting as that, but if anybody's looking for anything fun to do this weekend, the port here on Chili Fest is going on, and members of the Marine City Maritime Days has put together a bed for the Blue Water Young Professionals Bed Race. So we've got a group of people that are going to race the bed along with all the other beds that are participating in the race this year. So if anybody's looking for something to do on Saturday that is, you know, something fun, you know, local to do, that's, we're throwing the invite out to anybody that's interested.
What time is the race?
Three. So, but yeah, it'll...
Are you ever right on the main street there?
The, I'm not sure the location. I know that last year, we went up last year and scouted it out, and they had it, the parking lot right next to McMoran, or the street next to the parking lot in between McMoran. So I'm not sure exactly. They were saying something about there's some construction going on with the water main or something up there right now. So I'm not sure exactly the location, but it'll probably be wherever the crowd of, you know, a couple hundred people are going to be gathered around. What was that? Yeah, it'll be close to McMoran, for sure. But all their information's on their webpage and stuff like that, so I just had to build a bed. I got that part done, so. All right, well, thank you very much, guys.
Anybody else? No, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
With one modification. If we could move Item 11C to the bottom of the list, because gentleman from Strategic Solutions wants to be here, and he's not here quite yet, so they'll give him a little extra time to get here.
Move that to 11G?
Yeah, move, just switch, we'll switch C and G around.
Not C, oh yeah, okay.
We'll leave G where it's at, we'll move C to the bottom, so everything will just move off of one.
Okay. Make a motion to approve an amended agenda with moving C to G.
Support. Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda has been approved. Moving on to approval of the minutes.
Make...
Do we got to do these individually, or we just do them together?
We just do them together?
Because there was one modification that...
Oh, okay.
All right, so we'll go for the approval of Item 7A, which is the City Commission Special Meeting, December 14th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for City Commission Special Meeting, December 14th, 2015.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item 7B, which is City Commission Regular Minutes for December 17th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for City Commission Regular Meeting, December 17th, 2015.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been approved. Moving on to Item 7C, which is City Commission Special Meeting, December 29th, 2015.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for City Commission Special Meeting, December 29th, 2015.
Support.
Motion to support.
This is the one that was amended, so if he hasn't amended.
Okay. Make a motion, approve that.
Commissioner Hendrick.
The amendment was that when I read Rita Royg's letter, it should have been into the public hearing and then attached. That was the request, so that's what she upgraded it to.
Instead of the communications.
Correct.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Moving on to Item 8, which is consent agenda. We have Item 8A, which is planning commission meetings from November 9th. We have Item 8B, which is departmental activity reports. Item 8C, which is the Marine City Fire Authority Run Report, and Item 8D, which is business license for Michael Brothers.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda and place it on file.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Simpson?
Thank the police department for adding that location column back in in their run reports, that was helpful, so I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that.
Commissioner Simpson. Hendrick?
I'd like to know, can we get a report? I thought we asked for one of those for from the code enforcement guy. See what he's doing and...
The building inspector or the code enforcement?
No, code enforcement. We get the building inspectors.
I'd like to ask him about code enforcement.
No, I know, but it'd be kind of nice to see what's going on, because we always get, we get people telling us about code enforcement, and then if nothing happens, I'd like to at least see what's, you know...
Why are you spending about as much time on a report as if that was code enforcement?
It can be quick like the other report that the building inspector does.
Just I mailed these out and enforced this? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, like, you know, how many of whatever type or something. It doesn't have to be elaborate, but I'd just like to see something of what kind of code enforcement things were taken care of, since we increased the hours.
We'll work on putting something together between that and building department, because each report is a department, and code enforcement isn't really its own department, so I'll work with the building director and him to do it.
Work with the police doing code enforcement?
At one time.
At one time. That's what people are used to seeing, because it used to come with the police report, and we'd see what kind of violations were being written, so. I mean, I guess it would be helpful. I mean, you know, flight ticket.
Yeah, he works like four hours.
Flight, yeah. So who's going to put the report together?
I'll have him work with the building director, and they can do some type of report in conjunction with each other.
Even if he wants to add that to his report.
Yeah.
You know, I'd just like to see, are we doing any code enforcement, you know?
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda has been approved. Onto unfinished business, we got Item 10A, which is ready to serve fee amendment.
I would move to introduce the ordinance number 2016-01 in regards to the update of the ready-to-serve amendment. Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Commissioner Lovett?
I think it's a good ordinance. However, my question is about pools. I thought swimming pools were one of the concerns that residents posted when they came, and we just have here the extra line for sprinklers. Was that consideration?
Well, it's a second meter, actually.
It just means a second meter.
Right, so they could hook up a tap and fill their pool with the second meter.
Yeah, I just thought it was very said, to measure, only water used for lawn sprinkler systems. So that's not saying second meter.
You could put in here "or" where said water is reintroduced into...
Exactly.
You just put a "or" in there.
Well, the second meter is for outdoor use, basically.
Yeah, that's what they are for.
Mike wants to say something.
You fill a form out, and you fill, when you fill, when you pull out, you fill a form out, so they don't pay for sewage for the amount of water they put in the pool. They have a form that they fill up. So they can use their household meter to fill the pool up, they won't pay sewage on that.
So if they use their regular tap?
If they use their regular meter, they fill, they come to City Hall, they get a form, they fill it out, they put the meter number on there, or the reading, they fill the pool, put the reading back on, turn to the City Hall, they don't pay for sewage on that part, just the water.
Oh, that's good, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's anybody, you don't have to have the second meter.
They have a second meter.
Well, that's very valuable information, so all you people with pools, come in and fill a form out, and you won't have to pay sewage fees on it.
I guess the only thing you could do is between systems and where you put the word "or."
Yeah.
So do you...
That would solve it.
Do you want to amend the original motion and make that word change?
But I don't think that solves, I mean, you could have a second meter for something else. So I don't think the "or" would be there. I would maybe say "or pools," if they choose to use it for that.
It doesn't go in the sanitary sewer system, that's the issue. That's why you hit the second meter. You're only paying water, not sewer. So she's got it covered. Not reintroduced into the sanitary...
When you say "only water for a lawn sprinkler," that's what it says.
Or, I said, you could put the word "or" where said water is not reintroduced into the sanitary water system.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood where you wanted the "or."
Can also take out the "only."
Yeah.
So do we want to put a "or" in there? Does that work for you, Mike?
I'm sorry. We worked with the attorney and the DPW director and the finance director on this language. Everybody was in agreement.
I mean, it's...
We feel that it covers the need from an administrative standpoint in our office.
The second meter is there for people that are using it for lawn sprinklers and stuff like that. And if they have a pool, and they have a tap on that, they can just fill up with that. Or if you don't have a second meter and you have a pool, then you can fill out a form and you won't have to pay the sewage fee, so I think they got it covered.
It's fine with me, I don't care, I just wanted to bring that up, that it was very specific to one thing. I did not know, I don't have a swimming pool, I didn't know that they had another resource. Thank you.
Is there anything else? You all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment has been adopted.
Introduce.
Introduced. This is the introduction. Moving on to Item 11A, which is new business board appointments for the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals.
Make a motion that we appoint Graham Allen and George Boyer to the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals.
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
I just want to thank both of them for coming forward. This is a board, and not many people know, but it hasn't been able to meet in a good deal amount of time, and actually have a little bit of business to attend to that's important for, you know, light enforcement and those types of things. It's all part of that due process a citizen has, so because we had so many openings, that board has not had occasion to meet, so I appreciate the folks that stepped forward and are willing to fill those positions.
Anyone else? Yeah, they're both excellent candidates, by the way, and in case anyone didn't know, Graham Allen is relatively new to the city, and he was Santa Claus in...
Santa Claus.
34th Street. But he's also a lot of experience in building, handling large budgets, so we do appreciate both these gentlemen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the Dangerous Building Board. Moving on to Item 11B, board appointment for the Election Commission. This is one that we just have to appoint for most of us. Commissioner Hendrick has been doing it for the last couple of elections. So do we have anyone that would like to volunteer? What's involved in that?
We meet 10 minutes before the, you know...
Mission meeting.
And it takes five minutes. We just go through the list of who I would like to point in as election inspectors, and when we're going to do the positive accuracy test, and the, you know, just the details about the election.
So do I hear a volunteer?
You know, I was trained not to volunteer, but no, all right.
This is an easy one.
Somebody like to nominate, Mr. Avery?
I'll make a motion, make Kerry Avery the elective officer for the Election Commission.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Lucky doggy.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Item 11C, which is now the special event permit for Maritime Days Festival.
Make a motion to approve this.
They want to come up to the podium on this one, so. Welcome.
Thank you. Everybody saw the proposal that we submitted, so I just wanted to come up here and make sure that I was able to field some questions, if you had any. Make a couple of announcements publicly, and maybe get a little bit of clarification on a few things, so I'll let you start with questions, if you'd like.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. I just wanted to request that the commission takes into consideration sponsoring the Maritime Days Festival again this year for the city event fees. That's something that we've worked really hard with the city manager and the department heads to try and reduce our impact on the city services, and we'll continue to try and do that and work closely together to make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements and criteria, and trying to reduce our road closures and just our impact on the public with that. So we do have, and I also want to, like, clarify, part of the reason why we come to you this early with the proposal is we obviously don't have everything in place. We're still, you know, trying to bring some new things in and finalize the details, because there's still quite a bit of time in between, which is securing the date for the festival, making sure that we would have exclusive usage of the streets that are identified, the closures, and the parks adjoining Water Street for the festival. It's very important on a liability standpoint that there isn't additional traffic or other events that are happening that haven't come through the festival. Say somebody wanted to, you know, have a jazz in the park or something that wasn't in line with, that didn't go through the festival, it wasn't covered under the insurance, there'd be no implied risk to everybody involved, so. And on a more fun side, we have just sent out our advertising and sponsorship information to 300 different businesses locally, and not quite reaching out in different places. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that this year we're offering a title sponsor opportunity for $15,000, and that would, they would have their name plastered everywhere pretty much, it should be like a presenting, they would be presenting Maritime Days, and there's a lot of great perks that we're offering this year for that. Firework sponsorship for 6,000. This year we're offering our stages to have named sponsors as well, the festival stage and the main stage. Those come in at 3,025,000. We're trying to bring in some new and exciting entertainment for all ages, really focusing on that festival stage that's out in the street that everybody gets to use. Really like to be able to bring in, like, a ventriloquist and a clown, and more magic shows, more kid-friendly, maybe even an animal species, exotic animal species shows and things like that, some more family-friendly, all ages, even some more teenage geared bands to be able to play in the early evening hours. We're trying, really trying to broaden our spectrum of who we're reaching with that. And we're bringing back the ribs on the river competition and the parade. We're still trying to bring in a BMX bicycle show and a water ski show, if anybody has an interest in that. All these things, they can be called out specifically if you want to be the name sponsor for those types of things, as well as some parade sponsorship opportunities this year that we haven't had in the past. So the people like to typically sponsor the parade, there's a lot of added exposure for that, and we'd like to be able to bring in some more musical acts for our parade, namely the Marine City High School marching band. I've already talked to the director there, and hopefully we've communicated early enough that band camp won't interfere, will be a different weekend, so hopefully we'll be able to see them in the parade this year, so. Pretty much, we're going to look about the same as we did last year, we're bringing in some new things, but a different amusement company. They'll be small, but I think that they're on the high end of the small scale, so we should see some cleaner rides and newer rides, but it is just for small children, 10 and under. And I think that they can keep it contained to, like, one park in the road frontage right in front of that, so we shouldn't have too much spread on that as well, so that'll be good.
How about the Soul Park?
That's coming back.
That's coming back.
Yes.
One thing added to it, we're adding a...
I...
Go ahead.
Battery-operated 12-volt, or 12-volt battery-operated kids demolition derby will be held in between the time trials and the actual adult race on Friday. So borrowed the idea from festivals and fairs all over and it looks like a ton of fun.
Yeah. I've seen them up in Sandusky, they do that and the kids have a lot of fun.
So if anybody would like to donate a brand-new 12-volt battery-operated vehicle for a first prize, we'd like to be able to offer this as a free event as well, so.
How much does something like that cost?
Hundred to two hundred?
They were on sale for $150 at my area before Christmas. Anywhere's between $150 and $300.
Depending on what you get. But yeah, they're, the sport, I guess you'd say sport, is gaining in popularity with a lot of the guys that do demolition derbies. Their kids want to do it also. And, you know, they can decorate their car up and, you know, put fake stacks on them and stuff like that also. And, you know, paint their cars up accordingly. We've talked quite extensively with the guys that do it for the Richmond Fair. And they're very, you know, interested in helping us out with putting our first one on.
I do want to say that it's not as rough and tumble as like a demolition derby, if anybody's kind of curious. You put a balloon on the front and the back or just on the four corners and the last kid with the balloon not popped wins. So it's not really...
So there won't be wheels and engines and...
No.
For children.
That's good to know.
But fun. Fun for the kids.
Parents are there, very closely supervised, helmets.
Sounds good.
Any questions from anybody?
The closure of Water Street does affect some businesses. Has there been any attempt to alleviate the problem from last year with some of those people who do run business on Saturday and have to cancel?
To some extent, we talked with the city manager and we are going to be doing a little bit different layout this year for how we lay out our vendors and stuff through the town. We do everything we can to leave the roads open for as long as possible up until we actually need the space. So Mike's guys have been absolutely awesome to work with, with, you know, dropping barricades for us and then, you know, working with the police department to, you know, orchestrate when we're going to, you know, shut the road down and open the road back up, you know, to, you know, if I don't have anything physically for a block or something to that nature, I'm not going to just close it down for the sake of closing the road down. But, you know, last year we were stretched from one end of town to the other end of town for the entire weekend with different events going on. We might have had a couple hours here or there where something specifically wasn't happening, but throughout the entire weekend, there was events going on. So we are mindful of that, but we also remind people that, you know, according to everything that we, our information that we have, we're bringing roughly 20,000 to 25,000 people to town for the entire weekend. So there's a lot of foot traffic that is ending up happening for the weekend and a lot of new faces. And, you know, last year we had upwards of 60 vendors that were from all over the metro area, all over Detroit, all over Michigan for that matter. And including one of our vendors was all the way from Florida. So, and the guy had never even realized Maricopa was even here until our event last year. So, and he's been back. So there's, we're doing what we can is the short answer on that. But we do understand that, you know, this is one weekend out of the year that, in my opinion, it's not about the businesses. It's not about some, the more or less, it's more about dealing with being able to give the kids a fun, fun weekend to remember before they go back to school.
You know, folks could always get in the habit of parking on Market Street and just walk in that half a block or a block up. And, you know, really, it's more about education as opposed to, you know, inconveniencing a business too. It's not that far of a walk, especially if the weather's nice.
To the medical facility.
What's that?
To the medical facility.
Yeah, but I also know that Council on Aging would provide busing, so there's a solution there as well. So for folks that need that too.
Okay. I just heard comments on that one.
The bus would be easy to get through. I'm sure you guys could offer accommodations for that, no problem?
And we certainly encourage all of our downtown businesses to get involved and run specials and sales and things like that. You know, we don't, the sidewalks are open. We don't, we don't close off the sidewalks. That's something that we've worked, we're working that out, but we're not closing the sidewalks, making sure that all the ADA requirements are there as well. So all the businesses do have, and I don't know how that works, if, per city, if they're allowed to put anything outside or not, but that's, that's certainly something that they may want to explore. So to get involved there. Did we answer your question or is there more something deeper?
Well, this was a specific question from Cheryl Zimmer, who runs chiropractic clinic right there and has been shut down. Obviously, they probably don't want to move their equipment out onto the sidewalk. I certainly don't think that that should shut everything down. But we should, that wasn't last year.
She is directly next to the International Ferry, which is open, so she should be able to get in and out of her driveway.
I figured it would be the first place that would open would be right there, so.
It's never closed there because of that. We wouldn't close down her driveway either, so.
Okay. You have answered the fact that you're considering this and that's...
Yeah. And if anybody, I mean, we're certainly, we're here to try and help people as well. And, you know, we want to make sure that everybody kind of leaves this town happy. So if anybody has any concerns, we may be able to help. And we may not even realize that it's an issue. So to bring it up is, a question doesn't hurt.
I think for the majority of the businesses, it's an opportunity, so, you know. They're going to be fine. Do you know how that, the theaters in town, do they have anything going that weekend? Or they, were they aware of their date in advance?
Yes.
So they're staying clear of that weekend? That's good.
Well, I'm not sure about the Maryman.
There's no reasons, can I say something?
Sure.
There's no reason to stay clear. I mean, it should be a community event.
No, the snug in the riverbank.
Yeah, they, they're not going to...
Right. That's what I'm speaking of, the live theaters. Because, and it's more from them than from anything else because they just didn't want the conflict with, you know, that many people in town.
Well, last week I was presented with a petition to sign. And about 90% of businesses on Water Street decided. I didn't want to sign it. I did sign it. And I had a conversation with the people circulating and saying, you know, I don't want to be negative. This is a community event. We were the major sponsor last year. And I think it serves a great purpose. But they had some, they're real, well, they didn't want Water Street closed. My attitude is, well, it's for three days of the year. I don't think that's a problem. Their problem was that the committee, they felt, didn't reach out to the businesses to bring them into the event. And they would bring in outside vendors and position them across from a vendor or a retail establishment selling the same item, whether it be food or whatnot. So their attitude was, well, you know, there shouldn't be a conflict created with local business if this is a community event. The other question I was asked, and I didn't have to answer, and that was, are their sidewalks in front of their establishments free for them to do what they want on those sidewalks? And I couldn't answer that question either. I think, and so therefore, you know, I said, now, I don't think I take that petition to, I don't, you don't want to create anything negative. You want to work out a system that works for everyone and makes it a community event. I think it starts with reaching out to the businesses and letting them know well in advance as to what your plan is. If you've got a plan and you're changing the layout on Water Street from last year, where you had people right up against the curb for vendors and whatnot, the attitude seems to be unanimous, I just was trying to placate them, that you put all the vendors down the center of the street and you leave the sides wide open for people to walk the streets. Therefore, they're not blocking the retail establishments. The other thing is, if retailers want to run a promotion on the sidewalk in front of their, in front of their establishments, are they allowed to do that? If the need is, let's just say, want to put, I don't know, chips out there for sale, are they free to put chips outside for sale? I don't know the answer to that. So are retailers allowed or permitted to do their own promotions in front of their establishments, I guess is the question. The other thing is, a couple of people say, well, the portage on the front of my front door, which is not very enticing. So, you know, those things. I think if you've got a layout for Water Street, I think the best thing to do is to create it as quickly as possible and then present it to everybody for comment on Water Street. And that's going to eliminate a lot of the...
Every one of our meetings is...
I do want to just say that we do have our next public organizational meeting, March 15th. So everybody is welcome. That's a public meeting. Anybody can come. They can share their, express their concerns. They can share their ideas and ways to get involved in every aspect. So we post it publicly on Facebook and it's on our website. We are an all-volunteer committee. And I know that it's ideal to be able to say that I walked up and down Water Street and went into every business and told them every detail, but we just don't have the time to do that. So...
It's a printed eight and a half, 11 sheet, eight and a half by 11 sheet. Here's the layout for Water Street. Here's where we plan to put people, how we plan to put them. And solicit comments with just a simple sheet of paper. I think that's, you know, and then they feel like you're talking to them. You're reaching out to them and not ignoring them. And because the attitude is, and I don't agree with it, but the attitude is that they feel you're saying, this is our city for three days. Get out of our way. And the people that signed that, that's their attitude. And I know that's not what it is. So I think it's communication. I think you've got to reach out to them. Don't expect them to come to your meeting. I think you've got to reach out to them and say, this is what we're doing. If you've got any problems with it, tell us what they are and we'll try and remedy it.
Or invite them, then come to your meeting. You know, it's kind of like you soften them up. And then if they have questions, they can talk to you. I know you guys want to help people, but it kind of makes sense.
You've got to reach out to them first. And that way, you'll lay a lot of their concerns and fears because you're educating them on what you're doing. And if you're not creating a conflict for their business, then they're, you know, they're not going to suggest you are.
Mr. Simpson?
I think it's, maybe perhaps a simple way would be to contact the Chamber of Commerce and work through them. They do their newsletters that go out. You know, if you've had a form or a letter of some type, then run it through them. And they could get that information out for you instead of you having to go place to place because you certainly do have a lot of work. But the Chamber could do some of that legwork for you.
You actually brought a, yeah, the new Chamber president was actually at our last meeting. And that brought up some dialogue. And they're now offering some seminars for all the businesses, Chamber members and non-Chamber members. And one of the businesses is how they can get, they can market their business better and become more involved during festivals, special events, all special events, citywide special events. So I think that that will be touched upon. And I certainly plan on attending that and hopefully working with them to do maybe some layout and some dialogue about that. So that's something that I think that, that all of our Water Street businesses should consider going to.
It's definitely an opportunity, as long as everybody works together. So hopefully that'll happen this year. Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I think you guys have always done a great job being proactive. I mean, you guys are here in the cold of winter with a very dedicated package. You know, anyone that follows your normal course of advertising, whether it be social media, you know, CTV, you know, articles in any of the local papers. I mean, you guys have always been out well in advance. So for someone to say that you guys are, suggest that you might be hidden or anything like that, I'm not saying that's necessarily the case, but you guys have always been very proactive. And, you know, usually by the time that gets around, I think, you know, most people have heard about it many, many times. But certainly, I think, you know, for someone who's done similar to what you guys have done, yeah, you can, there's always more ways to reach out. But I think for someone to sort of go around your back and it seems to be more of a communication issue than anything. You know, someone could equally go to the group as opposed to circulating the petition to say, hey, we've had this issue as opposed to, you know, I think it takes both groups to come together as well, not just, you know, a group of volunteers. So, yeah, I would like to thank you guys and the rest of your board. You know, I don't think a lot of people realize that. Just like a lot of our city boards, everything is volunteer-run. You know, you guys have families to raise and your own jobs and your own life obligations. And it takes a tremendous amount of your free time. And oftentimes, I would bet your own personal money and resources to put something like this together. And oftentimes, you guys don't even get to enjoy it as much because you are the ones putting it on. And, you know, I've walked a mile in those shoes. And I don't think a lot of people realize that. And so, you know, I just want to point that out. And thank you guys for being willing to do that over and over again as well.
Thank you.
Listening to the conversation, one thing I did pick up when the gentleman was talking about businesses, just where you put your vendors is very critical. In other words, if you have a restaurant, you don't want a vendor that's food or whatnot. You know, in other words, if you, if you can, I don't know, place your vendors accordingly where they're not in conflict of an existing business, that's, that's something to just...
I will say that none of the vendors that we bring in, the food vendors, mirror any of the food that is already downtown. So that's, it would just be like putting another restaurant downtown, serving something completely different. So, I mean, it's, we don't have a fish specialty restaurant coming in or, you know, family dining restaurant type situation. It's all very different.
And even at that, I mean, during the weekend, that weekend, we had friends that were in town that said, you know, there's a two and a half hour wait at Anita's or the, you know, the fish company or stuff like that. So clearly, we're not taking business away from the businesses. People are standing out front waiting for food. So, there's only so much you can do.
I like the ribs. That rib idea last year was really neat.
That's the only thing that I was proceeding that you don't want to be in conflict of an existing business.
There's a big difference between the food vendors, the carts and the trailers, the wagons, and the dining that we have downtown. So it's not even, it's like comparing fast food to fine dining, I guess. Very different.
I'm sure it'll all work out for everybody.
Yeah, of course.
Just, I think Gary's idea is a great one. As soon as you get your plans firmed up, you know what's going to be where, let's get, let's make an effort to communicate that to all the business people. You guys don't have to go door-to-door. There's easier ways to do it.
Right.
Okay.
And if you're going to, if you know what speech you're going to close off at what time is for sure, that's important, too. It seemed like last year that Broadway, you had that closed. And from what I recall, I saw one vendor on Broadway.
We had 13 fire trucks that broke down.
Okay.
That were supposed to be coming to do a water...
Oh, is that what that was roped off for?
And then we also had offshore racing boats that didn't even show up. I don't know what their deal was, but they didn't show up. So, and then we had a car dealership that was a big sponsor.
That's one of the complaints that I heard last year, is you closed that street and had nothing on it.
And we had a local church that was doing a basketball thing out front. They were doing a free throw contest throughout the weekend. And they weren't happy either. And I don't blame them because there was, certainly was supposed to be more there. Once, yeah, we, I mean, it...
So hopefully with Mike's help, if that happens, you pull the barricades right away and open it back up.
And we're hoping that with doing this new layout, that it will allow us to completely fill through Broadway this year. So.
Okay.
But yes. But yes, there's...
There's a lot of variables, a lot of variables.
Working parts.
Especially when you're talking about water.
If there's rumors of a petition, as quick as you can communicate what your plans are, maybe we can kind of calm people down a little bit.
Okay.
All right, I guess we got it covered. Do you have anything else you want to share?
Can I request that you accept the special event application?
I'm moving to accept the special event, approve the special event application and the preliminary plans for Maritime Days 2016 as presented.
Motion support. Any discussion? All favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Thank you.
It's approved. Thanks a lot for coming. All right, moving on to item eight, 11D, which would be the proposed beach pavilion and restrooms.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi. As you can see, we have a generous donor who would like to build something back for the people of Marine City. And this is the gentleman right here, it's Shavik Kadu. Oops, I'm sorry.
Hello.
This is my husband, Shavik, and I'm Denise. We've been in town 38 years, Marine City Dairy Queen, and we wanted to donate this to the city as a thank you for all of the support, all the years. And this is our town and this is our people and we believe the town deserves a nice pavilion and bathrooms at the beach.
You notice I'm kind of shaking a little bit, I have the tremor part of Parkinson's or whatever.
No, you don't, yeah.
So, anyway, the idea came, for, I've been thinking about maybe last 10 years, why should I make something for the town, payback for my customer, my loyalty, whatever. So, I couldn't find any idea. There's a library, there's a lot of things. So, last summer I was passing by, I see two porta potty on the streets by the beach. And I said, well, my town deserves something better than that.
And then it hit me, I said, that's what I want to do. I want to put a pavilion with the bathroom facility for nice, you know, for the town. Will be helped a lot for everybody in town, on the beach or somebody walking on town, there is a bathroom, there is some, will help anyway. So, that's where the idea came from. And my wife been supporting me all along. So, we've been here, I came from overseas, from Lebanon, and I made it in this town. I considered myself succeed and I want to payback for my town. This is my town. I left my town in Lebanon, this is my town, because I cannot do nothing, there are no opportunity. Thank God, I'm a nice country and I appreciate that. I am lucky to be here. So, this is my payback. That's all I want to say. And I think my parents... He have a little drawn for the... I took his draw and added up a little bit more. That's nice, yeah, yeah. Okay, this is, as you can see, this is what he's planning. It'd be on the east side of South North Water in the park here. There's water and sewer already there from the previous houses. And as you can see, we were trying to hold it back closer to North Water Street so we could still have a lot of room between pavilion and the river. And I don't know what else to add. I think this is a great idea. I think it looks awesome there, it'll benefit the beach, it'll benefit everybody. I mean, that park is used quite often. Get caught in a rainstorm, they got someplace to go. Before we, before Shabie puts a great deal of time into this with an architect and we get into this, we just need to know your feelings on this and if we can go forward with this and figure this out and...
Commissioner Haverick.
I just want to say thank you because as long as I've lived up here in Iowa, we used to come to see both of you guys at the Dairy Queen all the time and this is just wonderful. It really is.
It is. It's a great thing.
Question I was asking you though, you know, the other lot we had, did you ever have any thought about not having it on the water?
This is where he would like to have it.
Okay.
So, that would be up there to him. There is water and sewer available on that side too.
Okay.
I thought there was some consideration on that side because of the festival.
Right, music festival. That's also, but this would benefit the music festival also.
Certainly a benefit.
This is wonderful.
There are many other places we can also move that to. You know, you're talking one weekend on a festival, this benefits everyone for an entire season and is a terribly generous offer.
Exactly.
And the other one will be demolished, the old one?
Oh, we'll take that right down.
So, you'll have that room there too?
We'll take that down, that'll be the new playground for the kids. Nice fenced in area, don't have to worry about it.
I'll take it down. You know, I guess the only thing that we need to consider is the care and maintenance of that because the original restrooms were closed because there wasn't anyone to take care of them. I knew you had it asked.
Couple of business persons that we're working on getting beach attendants. They're not going to be lifeguards, they're going to be beach attendants. They're going to be down at the beach and they are going to watch the bathrooms, clean up the park, clean up the beach, take care of the garbage. If anything's going on down there, they need the police, they will call the police, they won't hail anybody down there. But they were down there just to make sure that the beaches or bathhouses stay clean and the beach is picked up.
So, that's come out of your budget?
No. We're going to work this out.
Yeah, I know East China, near Park up there and their pavilion, they rent it out for events and stuff. Is there a chance of that?
Well, that's what we talked about, but being such a small community, it's going to be first come, first served. That is going to have to be because there's too many people at the beach that rent it out.
So, someone would still need to register if they're going to use that pavilion or it's just who's ever there first?
First come, first served.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, that's, we're going to have something, some type of sign up first, first come, first serve, be generous and share or, you know, something like that.
So, is there going to be picnic tables under there or fixed seating or...
We're going to try to, yes.
Picnic tables?
Yes.
How many people do you think a pavilion that size would hold?
I didn't figure that out.
Um, it's good. Fifty.
If we get a pavilion, I think we'll find people that can come up with picnic tables.
I think so too. I think... This pack is going to complete.
Okay.
I should...
Oh, it's going to have all the stuff, huh?
Barbecue, to do hot dogs or anything, it's going to be all packed.
So, it's turnkey?
And to save the town, I want to try to do the best. Because this is going to be carrying my name. People are going to remember me after I'm gone. At least I want to do, leave something good. I wouldn't buy you a plaque for that building. My town, my town deserve a good thing, really. I appreciate everything, that's what I made my life right here.
Very generous offer.
Yeah, very successful and thank God gave me more than what I expected. Thanks. I appreciate this town, really, how they cooperate with me all these years, for 37 years. I felt this is my family here. Thank you. Thank you. You're young, that's all our life too.
I would move to approve a motion of support for this plan and, you know, through Mike Ittrich and our building officials, you know, the proper channels, but to provide official support for the plan of the pavilion.
And waive the fees.
And absolutely waive any fees that are associated with the project.
I appreciate that.
We have motion support. Any other discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
And this is more for, you know, bigger picture on the plot. I know an outstanding item we have as a commission is the discussion on parking and it seems frigid now, but sometimes that's a very laborious process of how we might want to deal with that. And we were presented with a couple of options and I think now that we have this wonderful opportunity upon us, I think that, you know, maybe we should be making in meetings to come, some headway on that just because, you know, what a better way to launch that with a better parking solution for that area, which is both needed. So, I think part and parcel to that should be, you know, us doing a little bit of work on that end of things.
Well, I think if this gets approved, we should follow up with a celebration at the Dairy Queen right after this meeting.
Thank you. You're awesome.
Thank you. Anything else?
One you got more?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, that was nice. Moving on to item 11E now, which is the resolution for the safe route school. Do you want to explain that a little bit?
I think you have Mr. Hillfinger here to do that.
Okay.
Did you want to explain this?
Sure.
I mean, I can, but he's operating the grant now.
Mike Hillfinger from SES. Commissioner Lovett had been working on a Safe Road to School grant, which is through, it's basically an MDOT Alternative Transportation Program grant to make the routes to school safer. Michigan Fitness Organization runs the program. They basically, it's basically to get children more physically active, to walk and ride their bikes to school and to make it safer for them to do it, to educate them on doing that. So, the grant is, our application, we have to have into the state on February 2nd and we've worked pretty much on all the documents that need to be attached to the MDOT. And one of the documents needs to be attached is a resolution from the city to approve that we're going after the grant. Now, the grant can be up to $600,000 and they waived, they waived all the, any kind of matching on that. However, there's, it has to be some cost to the engineering if there is some. So, but I don't see that being, that whole $600,000, I don't know Diane if you want to chime in on that, I don't think it's going to cost as much regarding the plan. So, some of the crosswalks, we don't want to be improved, some of the signage, you know, the white lines across M29. Also, what we're working on now is a crosswalk across Chartier to the elementary school. We're still planning on that, we're working with the St. Clair County Road Commission to try to come up with a way which they will agree with that makes it safer for children to cross there at Chartier to the elementary school. And then also extending the sidewalk along Chartier at the other side of the road up to the school and then a path that would go from the sidewalk diagonal up to the elementary school. So, that's just some of the things that we've been working with Michigan Fitness Foundation on and St. Clair County Road Commission, MDOT's been involved and we're trying to finalize this and get it in by February 2nd. After that, there's a six-week period where we work with the state and it's federal money until we actually apply with the state, I mean with the, I'm sorry, to the feds. And, but once we get it to the state and it's pretty much, I don't want to say a done deal, but, you know, they're enthusiastic, Michigan Fitness is enthusiastic about our application and what we like to do and what we put forward so far.
Any questions?
I just wanted to add that we're some concerns, you know, about children walking, et cetera. And it isn't, certainly, the majority of walkers are the middle school students. But it's going to be a benefit for the entire community if we can make safe crossings on Parker Street, safe parkings on Chartier. We have people out there who walk into town, so it doesn't benefit only the children. And children don't have to be walking to school, you know, maybe fifth graders might. There are some children who live close, but the teachers can encourage exercise, physical fitness. They could use that sidewalk in front of the school to, you know, walk up and down. There are supplies that are, can be purchased through this grant to encourage, you know, good health, et cetera, even with the elementary, even if they're not, you know, walking all the time. There could be what they call a walking bus stop where the bus would stop at one area, let the children off and they could walk to school. Or as the teachers there said, they would gather together at school perhaps and then walk. But just, you know, that we provide some more safety within our community.
Commissioner Malley? Would that grant be able to include like a street light where I've seen it in like a major street like Grasset where the light only works when a pedestrian pushes the button, that activates the light and goes across like four lanes like on Grasset. There's a particular spot where I'm thinking of, but I'm just thinking over Chartier, some kind of a light. So, when it's not active when there's no kids going by, but it becomes active when you push a button.
We're in discussions with St. Clair County Road Commission on that. We've discussed that over a few meetings. The grant necessarily doesn't pay for street lighting. It'll pay for flashers, it'll pay for those machines that you sit on the street and it flashes, you know, slow down, you know, what your mileage, your speed limit is and stuff like that. It won't pay for infrastructure for a whole light, okay? There might be, they might be able to have flashers, not like a regular street light. So, it's kind of different, but the grant itself won't pay for that. That'd have to be some type of out of pocket, we have to work with St. Clair County to try to figure out how to put an actual street light there.
Do you know what I'm talking about? Like where a pedestrian just pushes a button or otherwise it stays amber. In other words, the cars...
We have talked about that, there are two flashers that stand on either side of the road and that's one of the possibilities on Chartier. I had hoped, we had hoped that we could do that on King Road also, there at Ward especially to have that. But I'm, my understanding is MDOT says that it will be too, you know, I'm not sure they want to do that yet. I guess there's some discussion of whether they would, but yes, they have that picture, it's right in front of New Haven School on Grasset I think you're talking about, there's flashers like that.
Well, there's what I'm talking...
Where you push the button.
You push a button, in other words, it blocks, like where I'm thinking of the spot, there's a spot on Grasset Avenue where it blocks all four lanes and there's like a light over each lane, so you know, when you see the red light, you stop.
This is not the kind, but it's just one on either side of the road, but the lights flash very brightly.
In other words, the light is totally inactive until somebody pushes the button to activate it, you know. So, if there's nobody walking across the street, MDOT shouldn't have any problem with it, you know. What I'm seeing is that traffic is flowing.
Right. Well, I mean, it's a basic up to St. Clair County, it's a county road, so we have to go with what they're letting us basically do. So, it's a tough call in Chartier. We've asked maybe to change the speed limit, we've looked at other things and they say, you know, they call it a warrant. You know, you have to warrant something to change on the street, you know. There has to be a large number of traffic, a large amount of traffic and I'm not, I'm not a traffic specialist, so I'll disqualify that. But there has to be a lot of traffic and there has, you have to warrant something to be changed there, okay? You have to do a traffic study and go through a process and in this application, it really wouldn't do that. We're just, it's more of making sure the sidewalks, pathways and, you know, some of the crosswalks, we do what we can to try to make safer pedestrians and children walking and biking across. But you're right, it's just a little, it's something that, you know, we have to discuss more with St. Clair County Road Commission.
I'm just looking at, it'd be a lot cheaper than to make a pedestrian bridge, you know what I'm saying? I've seen bridges for walkway and that costs a lot more money, having a bridge for the same purpose of doing it that way.
Right.
But it's just something to consider that I believe that is a very good thing that would work. I can't believe that they would have a problem with it, especially with a school, an elementary school on top of it, you know, if there's kids that want to walk across the street, you know, whatever.
Right.
Okay, I just...
I understand.
It's something that I saw that works, but I'd rather have something like that implemented before if there was a fatality, you know.
I understand.
It's something that I saw that works, but I'd rather have something like that implemented before if there was a fatality, you know, somebody getting killed or, you know, in that aspect.
I think they answered that question. This grant won't pay for that light, but they have talked to the county about it.
Right.
That's as far as you can get with it. So there's no sense going on and on about it. Commissioner Avery?
I have a question of order. What authority does this commission have to drive costs into future commissions?
I just, I mean, we do this often enough and I'm wondering how. The city commits to owning, operating, funding, and implementing over the design life of the facilities. We can only handle a budget one year at a time. I mean, look at our sidewalks now. We don't maintain that.
I guess we would address that on a per-case issue, depending on, you know, what facility that we're building at that time. You know, I think the resolution covers just our blanket support so we can move forward with the next step in the program.
It's a little more than that. In the title, it says "to attest to the existence of funds to carry out various infrastructure projects." What exactly does that mean?
But the intention is to be grant-funded via this grant and supporting grants.
No, it says "to attest to the existence of funds." Could you explain that to me?
Which way are you looking?
Right in the beginning.
The engineering is not paid for through the grant. We have to find some way to pay for the engineering. That's what, that's where the cost comes in. We don't know what the engineering is going to cost, if there is going to be engineering. I mean, if it's going to be a sidewalk, and I'm not an engineer, I don't want to qualify that. But if it's going to be a sidewalk, there isn't much engineering. If we're going to build a path to the elementary school out of Long Chartier, there might be some engineering costs there. The crosswalks, there's going to be a little bit of engineering work that has to be done to improve those crosswalks. I don't know what the cost is going to be yet. You know, there's other ways to get funds to try to engineer, to pay for the engineering. So we would have to explore all those ways to do that. But that's where the cost would come.
You know, I kind of cut off Commissioner Avery. We didn't get to the explanation on your particular question, which I apologize for. So could you address that particular paragraph?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Well, the question is in regards to the fact that the city has to commit to owning, operating, funding, and implementing the maintenance program over the design life of the facilities constructed.
I mean, you have to maintain the sidewalks.
Correct. But I don't see how we can fund some later commission to do that. We face that right now with our sidewalks. We have sidewalks that aren't safe, but we can't afford to fix them.
Commissioner Lovett?
Well, first of all, what we're looking at is basically, we're looking for a bike path, which is, I talked to Mike about that earlier, but it's basically, maintenance basically is being able to keep it cleaned off, which is much easier with their snowplow. They can go right along that rather than a sidewalk. Any other done within the community is funds that we will not have had to pay to fix the sidewalk. You know, maintenance is just keeping up what's there, but we have to keep our sidewalks up anyway. Well, so then that answers your own question then.
That's the point.
I mean, there isn't a lot that's going in there. We're going to reconstruct a few things, you know, just that extra pathway out to the school is not going to, I don't think, break any in the future. We're not asking for a lot of expenses.
Not in opposition to the concept. It's just, it's a matter of order of how do we transfer obligations to future governments?
Well, pretty much everything we do transfers obligations.
Well, not if you build a.
Well, if you do just about anything, any improvement in town, you basically are going to transfer the obligation to maintain it to future commissions. Future administrations. I mean, that's just part of the city. That's what we do, right. So I'm not worried about that. Exactly by passing this resolution, what are we committing to or not committing to?
We're committing to applying for the grant with your support and that there be a way to fund engineering costs. We'll find ways to fund engineering costs for the improvements.
And so what's the next step? Do we pass this resolution, then?
Next step is we apply on February 2nd to the state. There's a six-week period where we work with the Michigan Fitness Organization and MDOT to make sure that everything is set. And then it goes to the federal government of, for where the actual funds come from. And then we, as soon as we apply on the 2nd, then at that point, we would talk to any type of, any property owners where the path extension would go through and tell them, you know, that this is what's going to be on your property. We'd have to discuss that with them. Letters will go out with them beforehand before we apply. Those will be all attached to the application. And then at that point, we would start with the actual engineering or we'd have to put out for bid through MDOT, through their process, because MDOT grant. And then they would engineer the improvements and we would receive funds by the summer.
Commissioner Avery?
I know you've been working on this a long time, so do you have routes already figured out, maps?
Yes, that has gone with the grant. And I did present it to the Planning Commission. The routes basically would be the coming out of Marine City on Fairbanks. And you make that turnaround onto Parker. Is trying to get some sidewalking through there where people can walk. And then crosswalks down by Ward Street for students that are coming across that area of town. And then also down by Brown where students are crossing to the ones who live on the other side of the bridge, across there. And then the rest of the work is out on Chartier. And that's continuing, down Chartier, the sidewalk ends halfway to King Road. And so you would continue that as a bike path to King Road. And then when you got to King, you would make the diagonal going out to the, right to the elementary school. So that's basically all that we're looking at. Sorry, we should have put a bunch of copies tonight. I didn't think of it.
Commissioner Malley?
Would Tifa be able to help out any with the sidewalk or the engineering costs?
Sorry, what was the question?
Would Tifa be able to help out Tifa too?
It could be. It could be.
Yeah, we can. But that would be up to them.
You know, that's, we don't have the grant yet to start with. I mean, we'll have the fees and then, but we would have to.
I guess my only concern is we're saying that we have funds to provide for engineering that we don't know what the cost is and we don't know where the money's going to come from. That's, I guess, where I'm kind of stuck.
It happens all the time where communities apply for a grant and then you have to have, you have to have fun, you know, you have to have funds by a certain date. So when the engineering comes.
And if you don't, you don't get the grant.
So if we don't come up with the funds, then we don't get the grant. So there's no real liability. That's where I'm trying to.
You're right. That is right.
Commissioner Simpson?
I've sent through a handful of these meetings with Commissioner Lovett and, you know, read through all the documentation on that. And it's an unfortunate series of hoops that they want you to jump through. And this is kind of a bit of a boilerplate of what they're looking for you. And that's exactly it. It's, you know, you go to the next step and then you have to have this in line for the next step. But you can't do this until you get to that step before you actually get to the point where you're physically spending city money or looking for other grant money, whether it be, you know, somebody approaching Tifa or the St. Clair Foundation or something of that like. You know, for offsetting funds, you have to get to a certain point. I don't think at this point we're engaging, you know, and committing to physically spending those dollars again if we aren't able to come up with offsetting funds or, you know.
That's exactly where I was heading. I just wanted to hear that.
But they sort of outline this whole process and it's very lengthy. I'm sure Commissioner Lovett can attest to that as well as that, you know, it's sort of their hoop that they're creating for us to jump through. You know, we can't design a resolution 100% the way we want to. It's got to have a lot of the items that they list. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Is somebody willing to construct a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 0012016 for the Safe Routes to School program.
Support.
Your motion's support. Discussion. Commissioner Avery?
I would like to add an amendment to that that would indicate that it is subject to further voting of the commission to determine actual funding.
It will.
Yeah, there's.
We have to vote to spend money.
Yeah, I know. I hear.
It will come back.
Yeah, that's.
That's a given. I work for the government too long.
I just want to say that I'm just very grateful for Mr. Hillfinger coming along and being part of the grant-writing process because it is, it is a series of hoops to write a grant for anything. So appreciate that very much.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's been adopted. All right. Moving on to 11F, which is Title VI, nondiscrimination.
This is a plan that we received from the state. This is something that's required to be in place in a community that works with MDOT for any type of road projects or anything. We have had one in place. It was under John Gaber. He was the Title VI Coordinator. And the reason that we need to update this is obviously because he left on in place. And in essence, the reason that we need to update it is just to make sure that the new people that are, obviously, me being the temporary or suggested-appointed coordinator for this plan is aware of all of the requirements for the nondiscrimination and that I pass that down to all the department heads and also that the commission is aware that this plan is in place.
So we need to approve this plan or are you just looking for us to?
Looking for approval. The attorney did take a look at it. It is boilerplate language from the state. He didn't see anything that was controversial in this plan.
Commissioner Avery?
We didn't hear anything about obligations. Here we go again with things that have, could have unlimited funding problems. I speak of the LEP processes.
What's page?
Well, that's page 19, but, I mean, there's a lot of nice things. I realize this is an effort that has to be done to meet certain government things. But then we get to further on.
This is where the bookmark comes in really handy because you could have bookmarked that and pushed the button and gone right to it.
I did.
I think one of the things maybe he's referencing is.
I can't find.
Are you talking about the requirement for the limited English proficiency?
Yes, very much.
If we reach a threshold in the community where there are people that don't have the proficiency of the English language, we're required to provide documentation in another language. At this point, we're far below the threshold. And if we do say get to a point where that is an issue, we can always determine kind of the cost-benefit ratio, you know? Okay, working on, working with the state on projects, is it worth the cost that we would have to put in place to develop any type of pamphlets?
This is mandated by the state, the federal government, or both?
Both. Yeah, so it rolls down from the federal government.
It's an unfunded federal mandate. That would cause the commission to pass possible liabilities to future commissions. Fine, okay. However, the LEP situation, the camel knows is already under the tent wall. We have a federal government that is causing a percentage of LEP speakers to dramatically increase in cities. With no input from the city, this invasion is by a political ideology. Basic tenets are directly in opposition to our constitution. We all took an oath to support the constitution. We have to provide here, somebody calls our office speaking another language. Every attempt will be made to keep the individual online until an interpreter can be conferenced into the line and if possible, determine the language spoken by the caller. Well, in the great world known as fresh Canada, there's many, many dialects. And we have a chance of getting them. The country is getting them. The translators you're going to get have a very good chance of not working on our side. We have people intent on replacing our constitution with Sharia law. I think if we're to sign on to something like this, it should be a yearly requirement and vote on it again so we know what it'll cost us. Thank you.
What happens if you didn't approve it?
We wouldn't be eligible to participate in any MDOT projects. This is actually only for MDOT projects. This isn't for any of the other city business. It's only for projects and as far as the projects, predominantly DPW working with MDOT.
And it states very well in here, I thought, that what Marine City do if we have somebody who comes in and it says, you know, will we notify the public that the service is available with a seven-day advance notice? It will be as cost-effective as possible, some say 21. So I don't think we're committing ourselves to anything more that we could really handle.
At the bottom of 22.
Well, I mean, this is not going to happen. You're not going to pull, you're not going to pull an interpreter out of your hip pocket.
Right, so we're approving something we can't do. So why do we modify the little parts? There's a lot of good work that went into this. But if we approve it, then we are stuck with it. It's like bills in Congress. People don't read the stuff and they pass it.
Can we make modifications to this?
Not likely.
Yes.
Not likely.
I mean, I understand what you're trying to say here, but it also says, until an interpreter can be conferenced online, if possible. So they put the if in there. And the other thing is nowadays, luckily with computers and all that, you can buy computerized software now that you can talk to it and it can transfer it and transfer it back and, you know, you can do a lot more now today than you could before. But I think it's one of those things, it's the government.
Yeah, well, we could talk about that till cows come home. Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I don't disagree in general terms with Commissioner Avery's. What I'm hearing is his general concerns about, you know, future financial obligation. But, you know, as the city manager said, it's sort of boilerplate and not likely that they would approve any adaptation just because it is, you know, state and federal programs that oversee these and they'll say no just to say no because we're different. And I think we're, the money that we're having access to far outweighs, you know, the benefit as, outweighs any cost that this might, that we might incur in implementing this. And, you know, again, notwithstanding Commissioner Avery's concerns, but I think, you know, big picture, I do take an exception to something he says, you know, that people are voting on something they haven't read. I've read every single word of this.
No, not here. I said, Congress.
Okay. It was not clear to me, but it was a huge board packet this week and there was a lot to.
We do read these.
But I think, you know, it's unfortunately a necessary evil. But I 100% agree. There are so many unfunded mandates. It's unfortunately our reality and it really ties us, but I don't think we have other options really at hand.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Title VI nondiscrimination plan.
Support.
Motion, support. Want to talk about this any further? I mean, your fight, and I agree with you, is at a different level. This has to be changed at a higher level than this commission. Yeah, but, you know, there was a time where people that became. Yeah, but, you know, there was a time where people that became, you know, citizens were just expected to learn the language, but...
But if we have a project and we don't have it, we can't do the project. That's where they tie your hands.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Carrie's. Now, we're going to the Brownfield Grant and Loan in In-N-Out Water Street, and I believe you're up again, Mr. ... We moved this to the last just because we thought you were going to be late. Well, we're glad you're here.
I thought you, I thought you passed the... That's all cool.
No, no.
Just kidding.
We weren't going to do this without you.
Mike Holfinger, SES. So, yeah, what you have in front of you is MDEQ documents for the In-N-Out Water Street project. It's a loan and a grant. It's regular course of business that, in the, they're Brownfield projects, the MDEQ gives a loan and, with the grant process. So, the loan is for approximately $167,000. The grant is for about $249,000. The loan will be paid back through Brownfield tax capture. So, it's basically the incremental taxes. So, right now, you're at a certain level at the, at the site right now. So, anything, so that'll keep, they'll keep paying taxes on that, or it'll go to Tifa, and then anything over and above that, when the development's completed, those taxes will be captured and through the Brownfield Authority, and, and that will, that's where the loan will be paid off from those capture taxes. Okay?
I think, didn't we already approve that at a different?
Yeah.
You want the contract back for approval? One thing in addition to that, we also do have a draft of the guarantee from the Vertons to cover this cost, should they not move forward with that?
So, basically, these are the documents that the commission requested to see before we move forward, and this won't move forward until, let me give you a little update on the project because it plays into it. We're still in discussions with the MEDC. They come back to us a couple times, so we're negotiating. There's still a gap in the development process, so we're still negotiating with them, but it looks very promising. Like, you know, I can't give you a percentage, but they're working with us and, and if you take a look at the, you know, the numbers, the pro forma, we're trying to make it where everyone's comfortable. The MEDC, it looks like will come in with some type of a community revitalization program grant along with a no-interest loan. So, that's what we're working on right now to still make the, the project work, work, and it looks good. The other thing, though, that we'll have to, once we get approval on that, or some type of soft yes, what they come, what they do is they go in front of their committee, they'll come back to us and say, okay, we agree, we're going to give you, they won't, they won't give us anything in writing, but they'll send us an email, say, we agree, and so, so then, at that point, one of the other things that we'll have to come back to the city on is what's called a commercial redevelopment district. Now, what that is, is a, it's a, under the Michigan Act, it is a tax abatement for 12 years. And the reason we need to do that is because the cash flow on the project won't work. We've tried other avenues, but we'd have to go through, we have to go through this process. And basically what it is, is the city forms a district on that site, just on that site, and then agrees to a tax exempt certificate that the developer will come to the city on. Now, what this does, though, is you've already, the city's already agreed that the taxes are going to be captured through the Brownfield, okay? All this does is kind of, it transfers for the first 12 years of the Brownfield plan. It transferred half of those captured taxes. The developer will, will be abated. So, let's say that, you know, the taxes are captured at $30,000 a year. Okay, that's a capture. $15,000 of those taxes will be abated, so you're only capturing $15,000 for the first 12 years. Now, we did the analysis and the payout in the Brownfield plan. It looks like everything will be paid back by the year 20. So, it'll be a 20-year, then, once that's all done, then the, the capture to, from the Tifa, if it's still there, or the city will get the taxes, the increased taxes on the development. I know it's kind of confusing, but this is, this is how the Michigan Act, the Commercial Redevelopment Act is, is, works, and it's, it's done, I know they've done it in Port Huron for a hotel project, and again, it's, you will see the economic benefit with this project. It's just that to get, to get to the point where it even cash flows, this, this abatement has to come into play.
So, you're basically extending the term of the Brownfield?
Yeah, for a few, for a few years, yes, yes. I mean, originally, the, the original Brownfield grant was, showed a 30-year period, but that was all without the, the loan, which we've gotten now, and without the grant, which we've gotten now. You know, the grant from the MEDC, $249,000 cuts that timeframe down quite a bit.
So, then, your calculations with the abatement are about 20 years?
About 20 years, yes.
But the initial tax is still going to be paid, the one where it's below the cap?
Yes, yes. I mean, the original, the taxes they're paying right now at that site will remain the same. It's all incremental tax, taxes we're talking about. So, it'll be a 50% abatement on the incremental taxes of the new development.
For 12 years.
For 12 years.
And then 100% of the captured taxes go back to paying off the loan again?
Correct. But the loan, in their analysis, the loan will be paid back, you know, if you start, the loan, it'll be paid back at, I think it's year seven, if I'm not mistaken. But then, there's other costs with the Brownfield for the St. Clair County Brownfield Authority, and I can walk through those numbers with you if you want me to sit down with you, but in a meeting like this, it would be pretty difficult.
Well, just in essence, we're not losing any money on the project. We are keeping the tax where it is right now.
Right.
We'll, like, I see three levels of taxes, so the tax that, that the car dealership pays right now is, will remain the same, but now we're getting a building and an industry there that is going to cost a lot more, and eventually, we'll pay a lot more taxes to the city. But until that happens, half of that has to go back to pay for the Brown, that, half of that new tax.
Yeah.
Is going back to pay for the Brownfield development.
Yeah, I mean, MEDC, I mean, the MDEQ loan.
Right.
Along with other costs of the St. Clair County Brownfield Authority.
No, it's a, it's a good deal.
It would have been nice if we had a breakdown of all the stuff. Who put these documents together?
DEQ. Those are MDEQ documents.
Both of these?
Yes.
Now, you might want to go back and have them fix them. Look at this map on here. It says, In Street, Water Street, St. Clair, Michigan, City of Grand Haven, Ottawa County. Both of these. It doesn't even have the right community. I mean...
Sorry about that, I didn't catch that, but it wasn't...
It's on both.
I didn't put them together and came directly from DEQ.
Well, that's why I asked you to do it.
Sorry, came directly from the DEQ.
Yeah, you might want to correct those for the DEQ.
We'll get those corrected.
Then, I was looking at your information on the community revitalization thing, and you can only do it for 10 years. You can't do it for 12.
Which one?
The Community Rehabilitation Exempt Certificate's only good for 10 years, according to the law.
Is that what I, is that what I put in there?
It says, government, at least one year, but not to exceed 10. This is out of the state's information on those types of...
Oh, no, no, that's, that's rehabilitation. This is Redevelopment Act. It's two different acts.
It's, it's the exact same thing you have. Community Revitalization Program, they pulled all their data off there.
Revitalization Program? The CRP? That's a, that's a grant. That's not, that's not the community, that's not the Commercial Redevelopment Program.
They put most of it under.
Excuse me?
That's what they've got all under. I mean, that's what I looked up, and that's what was all there.
CRP grant, which is Community Revitalization Program, is an actual grant that comes through the MEDC.
Yeah.
Okay? So, that, that's the grant that we're talking to the MEDC regarding, you know, the, the post-Brownfield, the development of the project, okay?
Well, I'm talking about the Commercial Rehabilitation District, creating the district.
Okay. Did I put rehabilitation in there? It should be redevelopment. Because there's two, there's a...
Well, you got revitalization, then you got rehabilitation.
Okay, well, I, I, that's, that's wrong. It should be, there's two different acts. There's a Commercial Rehabilitation Act.
Yes.
And there's a Commercial Redevelopment Act. The Commercial Rehabilitation Act is if there, there's existing buildings that you're rehabbing, and that is, you can abate for up to 10 years at 100%.
Well, it's also for new, and it even says it's for hotels.
Okay, but that's rehabilitation. Redevelopment Act is for brand, only for brand-new hotels, and should be a 12-year, there's allowed a 12-year 50% abatement. I don't know what you're looking at, so...
Are you looking at information that he provided or something?
No, I'm looking at stuff I...
Well, then, I don't know what you're looking at, so I...
Well, I understand that, but all I'm saying is, we get a lot of this information, okay?
Right.
First, you're using words, now you got a different word from the two terms I'm trying to find in here. I'm trying to do the research and the homework to make sure I understand what you're trying to do, but when I don't get all the information properly, and I don't have any charts on how this breaks down, and I don't have, see, that there's even a purchase agreement on the property, I don't see any of this stuff, so it's like, you know, it's pretty hard to, and you get this two days before the meeting, and you got to try to make another decision on it, and it's like...
I'm not asking to make it. There's a decision to be made. I'm giving, I'm giving you a heads up because, to make this project go through anyway. Sorry.
Yeah, in fact, the Vertons came in a few weeks ago as informational, and they, one of the things that they did say is exactly this, that they, you know, they would vouch for the money in, in writing, you know, should anything happen with the program. You know, they indicated, they expressly said that they have a purchase agreement waiting to happen pending the outcome of this. So, they said they have all of that in place, so...
He doesn't, he don't have one. I checked it out. There's no, is there a purchase agreement on the piece of property?
Yes.
Well, that's not what everybody that's got the property says. It's still up for sale.
I think until one is executed, it is officially up for sale. I think you can legally say that, but everyone has come to us and indicated that. And if I could, I had one, one question in regards to that, if I still have the floor. On page eight of the DEQ Brownfield Loan Contract, I just had, it's probably pretty insignificant, but under ineligible expenses, it's Article 26, one of the ineligible expenses is underground storage tank registrations, if I'm remembering in the previous meeting, you guys indicated that there are some unregistered tanks, and that is part of the cleanup of the site. Does that apply to this? Is that something that's going to affect this, or would that be registrations of, of new tanks going in the ground?
That's a good question, and if it isn't eligible, and we had, they, we haven't determined everything that is eligible or not eligible yet, but if it isn't eligible, the developer would have to pay for the cost, and then, and then they would be reimbursed through the Brownfield Authority.
So, they will follow the procedure listed herein as, as opposed, you know, requesting additional funds to cover?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, you said that there is 12 years, in other words, they don't have to pay taxes for 12 years?
No. No, no, no. They're paying, no, they're going to pay, they're going to pay 50% of their taxes, basically, for 12 years, and then half of that...
But we don't receive it. The city won't receive it, it goes right to the Brownfield, correct?
That's right.
So, it's 12 years in the sense that the city is not making any revenue.
Okay. If I can attempt to explain that for someone who might also have, anybody in the audience or at home who might also have a difficulty following that, so, and please correct me at any point if I'm wrong, this works similar to anyone who's familiar with how Tifa works. So, you have that tax increment, or the rate at which that tax goes up when that property is developed. So, right now, we have a current tax rate of the, the service center or the dealership right there. The city will still get that amount of tax, so we will not get less money. So, the, the money that we're discussing is the amount at which goes up when that property is developed. Does that make sense? You were on Tifa, so that should be familiar with?
Yeah, but I thought you were saying that, in other words, you got to pay for the Brownfield for...
Right, out of that increment money, the percentage of that increment, so a percentage of that money that, that we get when that property is increased, so those new taxes, so the city will always get the tax rate of which the dealership has. It's that, that new money coming in, the property improvement. Am I explaining that maybe more layman's type terms? I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, a lot of people don't understand how Tifa works, or the increment, that's what they mean by tax increment, that, that bump or that increase that you get when you improve a property. In this case, would, could likely be pretty substantial. So, it's a percentage of that property increase. So, in this case, I mean, this is how I view it, and certainly everyone up, up here might have a different thought, but, you know, if this, this plan doesn't go through, then there is no property increase. You know, there, there is likely no development. So, in this case, it's almost like they're, they're generating that increase, and they would like to use that to help offset some of the costs of developing that property, which are substantial. And, you know, they're, they're running the numbers, and they, they need that in order for this to make their, their business plan worthwhile. If they don't have that, then there is no property, so there isn't even any increase to the city. Is that...
Yeah, it makes sense, but that's not what I was asking. For 12 years, the city, in a sense, doesn't get a penny from it.
No, not correct. They, they get the existing, that's what I was trying to tell you, that they don't get a penny of that increment or that increase. We still get...
I understand the increase, but you're saying, but who's going to pay for the Brownfield then? The, the Brownfield, I thought was going to be covered from the tax.
It is, but what they're doing is they're splitting off half of that for a 12-year period to cover some additional costs, which basically has the effect of extending the term of the repayment of the loan. But it's, they're, they're using the same money. They're still using the TIF money, the money that's been captured from the increase in taxes.
Okay.
So, it's all the same money, they're just spending it different. The city's not doing anything different. It's, it's how they're going to repay...
And the city will still have that base funding that we're used to.
We still get money then for the property, is what I'm saying. Because we're like, we still get money from the property.
Right, but, you know, you're giving up all future increases for a period of about 20 years, so, but as Commissioner Assistant pointed out, there would be minimal increase without this development, so...
That's assuming it wouldn't sell to anything else, but...
Right.
We'd like this one to go through.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I guess I'd like to see a breakdown or something put together. The other thing is, is what happens if the, when they go do, I know all the cleanup was estimates. What happens if it comes in a lot higher?
Well, then, the, we were shot on the grant and the loan too, though, but then, the developer would have to pay the additional costs for the cleanup, and they would be eligible to be reimbursed through the Brownfield Plan.
There's also contingency in there, correct?
Yeah, there's like a 15% contingency, like any other project. But the consultant that we, that the St. Clair County Brownfield Authority uses, you know, is very experienced and has done hundreds of these projects. Not...
So, yeah, so what, if anything, do we have to do tonight? Nothing, this is just all information. Is there any other questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item 12A, which is...
I assume that means that you want me to move forward with this contract, sign it or send it?
Well, that's what I'm asking. What, what did you...
Everybody said we didn't have to do anything.
Yeah, they said we didn't have to do anything.
So, you're looking for approval on the contract, so that's inaccurate. That's what you were looking for.
Not necessarily approval on the contract, just direction from you guys that I have the authority to sign and send it.
I thought that was the last vote that we took, gave you the authority.
Yeah.
That's, I'll go with that.
Well, that's, that's what I thought. Well, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we already, we already gave you the authority, so... Now, can I move on?
Please.
Item 12A is financial business disbursements, including payroll.
Make a motion to approve total expenditures, including payroll, of $5,890, $589,747.2.
Support.
Motion to support. Discussions or questions on the disbursements? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mallory?
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor's attorney?
Yes. Moving on to Item 12B, which is preliminary financial reports.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary financial statements for December of 2015.
Support.
Motion to support. Any questions on the financial statements? All favor say aye.
Aye.
City manager's report.
This week, I attended several meetings, Blue Meets Green Leadership Council, the Tifa Historical Commission. I was visited by a representative from Honeywell that's interested in doing a feasibility study on our energy and operations, to see if there's any potential for savings there. This would be a no-cost feasibility study. They just take a look at our usage for things like electricity throughout either our streetlights or buildings, which I know that we've had that done in the past. They'd also take a look at other things in the city, such as operations at the wastewater treatment plant, and the waterworks, and see if there's anything that they can do there to help find any type of cost savings. I also had the representative from Michigan Municipal League, who represents us for workers' comp, come and visit me. He just did a typical annual review, he said everything looks good, and hopefully, we will continue with that. We have been working with the county, Mike in particular, to get the emergency siren at the DPW station repaired. There were some issues with conflicts with the fire department radios, and hopefully, the county will be able to figure out what's going on there and get that fixed. I guess it's been in a state of disrepair for a little while. Potentially, for our next meeting, I could have auditor contract. I was presented with a one-year and three-year option, I can bring both of those options to the board, if you're so inclined. I know that there has been some discussion about the sheriff's department, I'm not sure if we're ready to move forward with that, but potentially, that could be at the next meeting for discussion. And also, with the correspondence that we had from the fence ordinance with the planning commission, I would expect that to be on the next agenda for first reading. That's it.
I don't know if I'd have that for first reading, there's a lot of issues still in that fence ordinance, I know they did a lot of work on it, but I'd like to discuss it first at a meeting beforehand.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Hendrick?
Didn't have nothing to say.
Speechless, didn't I?
Yeah, he had nothing to say.
Pro ten, do you have anything?
Yeah, 2016 dropped to a grand start. I mean, exciting stuff happening at the Mariner. New pavilion, sounds like it's gonna happen, and hotels going, so it's fantastic. We're off to a grand start.
It's going a little bit.
It's going a little bit, slow steps, you're dealing with the government.
I would just add on to what Commissioner Turner said, Mr. Coes with the awesome enthusiasm and the titling of his theater among 100 in the country, to be able to show some independent films and documentaries there at the theater. Aaron Atkinson for his Waterworks System Operator, congratulations to you and Mike on keeping up such a great department. The good work our police department continues to do, and our DPW, the fire department as well. Mr. Blanchard and Bob and Melissa, the tremendous work and enthusiasm you bring to maritime days and keeping that going, thank you for that as well. We're a very lucky city, Mr. Cato as well, you know, this, the work down at the park, and it's just a city that is just moving forward and has a name in the region for being awesome, and I'm looking forward to seeing the Detroit Free Press and all of these people coming into town and verifying what we know is a wonderful city too. So thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I guess the only thing I'd like to see is that we do proceed on some type of town hall meeting for that beach area like we discussed before Christmas, and see if we can't squeak something in, so that we can get that all out and let people come in and tell us what they think. You know, that's one of the things I want to do. The other thing is the snow on the sidewalks, I just want to remind everybody, if you have somebody that plows snow for you, please make sure that they don't pile it up on to sidewalk and block it. There's been a few, and people have been real receptive to take care of that, but we need to be careful, because there's a lot of people, especially the ones heading down to Kmart, there's a couple areas down there where it's really piled up, and we have a lot of people that still use wheelchairs and walk or bicycle down to those areas. We need to make sure they get cleaned up, so please kind of watch your contractors, and that's it.
I would just like to add to that, and some of the earlier, what we had, that there is an amazing amount of, I'm gonna say children, school-age people walking through down Fairbanks, and so, we have to bear that in mind. I am surprised when I see how many kids are going through there. I don't know when schools get out, because I see large bunches, but the last thing, I'd like to just report a little bit of sad news. Marine City lost a gentleman this morning who loved the city very much and knew the history very well. Jim Kane passed.
Just had a couple things, a couple of them mentioned before, but just to be clear. We discussed the fence ordinance, and actually, we didn't really discuss it, we just sort of received that, and the planning commission spent a good deal of work on it, I just, the city manager alluded to this, I'd just like to see us, at some point, discuss that, whether we want to alter that or adopt that, and whatever that looks like, so I just would like, at some point in the near future, us to sort of, you know, put that to bed, or send it back for further review, or what have you, that's been an issue that has been up for discussion quite a bit, and before we get to fence building season, I think, whatever our new ordinance might look like, I think we need to do some due diligence there, so that's in place well before that happens. Okay? And then, also, as I indicated before, that beachfront parking, there's a handful of issues, every now and again, we say, oh, we'll get back to that, and I want to make sure that, you know, some of these, you know, in a couple months, the new, the better weather will hopefully be upon us, and, you know, so that beach parking, you know, because that could be pretty labor-intensive, you know, several meeting type of discussion. And also, we have the police department issue kind of still looming about us, you know, we have an interim chief that is doing a wonderful job right now, but I think we owe our department, we owe our citizens, whatever our permanent solution to that is going to be, we haven't discussed that in a number of weeks or even months, and I would like to see us maybe readdress that, whatever that's going to be prior to our budget, you know, we can talk about next year's budget, but if we don't know, you know, our last recommendation was a part-time chief, and now we don't have a lieutenant, so I'd like us to revisit that.
The city manager did indicate that it's probably gonna be on the next agenda too, which we've had quite a few discussions, and we've got some, quite a bit of information, so...
Yep.
It's all stuff...
But again, my commissioner privilege, so I'm just trying to get my feelings out there, because that's what this is for, so...
I understand, I'm pointing out that some of this stuff's been covered.
But she indicated, you know, the numbers from the county, but I'm also saying, whatever us as a board are looking for, for that, not even just the numbers for the county, but, you know, we, I feel like there's a handful of things that we haven't done our due diligence and acted upon, and I'd like to see us kind of get back on those and resolve those, I think that's, we're not doing our existing staff and our community justice by kind of leaving those out there for so long.
Those are all things that were on my list that I gave to Jerry, if you saw that article, so these, yeah, those are all things that I pointed out that we had to get to at the earliest opportunity, beginning of the year. I also threw in the sidewalk program, which definitely is something that we need to get on that front burner, the parking at the beach, which was a plan that got basically derailed, so we need to get that back on the tracks, and other than that, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everybody, and very encouraged as usual, Marine City's a great place, and every day, we have more people that figure that one out, and it's getting better all the time. The gift that we received today was just amazing, and it just shows that, how people feel about this community, so we got a lot of work to do this year, and it's gonna be a good year, but we're gonna get it all done. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Please...